Another sunny day in paradise. Which it is, not being sarcastic. How are you this morning?
Oh, I'm doing all right.
Well, all right is better than not.
Yeah.
Good morning, muffin.
Good morning, just listening while I'm working.
Yes, understandable, so.
The beauty of Zoom.
Oh, I know, it's, it's, it's really.
I guess, though I miss you well in person.
Well, yeah, there is that. It's got some ups and downs, without a doubt. Just like the rest of life, right?
Exactly, so I'm gonna sign out, but I'll be listening.
Yes, all right, see you later.
It looks like Greg coming in now.
Bless you, Anne. Thank you. Early morning, can't find the mute button.
Greg, is that you? Are you there? Eli, did you sign in as host?
I did not. Would you like me to?
Well, Greg cannot unmute himself. And I'm not a host, I just signed in.
All right, I will. Sign out and sign back in as a host.
I'm okay, I don't know what was going on.
Here we go.
What was happening this morning?
The login was a little strange, I was, they asked me for a password, which has never happened before.
Yeah, the links have not included the. This time in both the agenda and the. Link on the calendar, it did not include the passcode embedded in the link, so you had to type it in from the agenda.
Right. I eventually did that.
That's been happening with most of the links lately to the meetings that I've been on.
Well, better than. Better than the planning board meeting a couple of weeks ago when the link didn't work at all.
That was odd, because I, I got on with that right away, without even having to answer the, I mean, enter the passcode, so it's weird how.
It, it, the link had been, the link had been changed somewhere in the course of people logging in.
Yes, I remember that.
Okay, I, I would love to chat about links, but it's 8:34. And I think we need to call the meeting to order. This is. A meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, March 29th, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 8:34. We have. Two items on our agenda today. And this meeting is being recorded, and I believe. That that's Gail down there. And meeting minutes are being taken by Gail Hunter. I'd like to start with any comments from the public that are. Not on the agenda. Okay, hearing none. The Chair would like to report that the letter that. Was sent out last night. Is not going to be discussed today because it's not on the agenda. And. If you have any specific comments. Please contact me. And that letter will be published, this is, it's not a letter, excuse me, it's the final report for. The town meeting. Coming up in a few weeks. So, I'd like to move on to. Warrant articles. And. Perhaps. I'm, I'm running handicapped, I'm on the road, and I don't have access to a printer, so I have not been able to put out. Print out a copy of documents today. So I would appreciate if. Either Greg or Eli could, well Eli, you're not signed in as host. If you could share the. Document that has the articles in it, so that we can discuss it.
Greg, are you signing as host?
I am not.
How does this happen?
And sign back in as host, and then assign co-hosts around, all right?
Thank you. Thanks, Eli.
Back in a minute.
So how did the meeting come up? Saying the meeting was being recorded?
That's a good question.
If no one signed in as host.
Yeah, that puzzles me.
I signed in earlier, and it said it was already being recorded.
Yes.
So I.
If we don't know where. If we don't know where the recording is, perhaps we should stop it and restart it.
No, it's on Zoom, right? I mean.
I don't know what it means.
And once I get to sign this host.
Automatically stored on the cloud associated with the meeting.
How is it associated with the meeting?
By time.
Registration with the Zoom, the original registration.
Okay, here's Eli. Thank you, Eli.
And Greg. Will be a co-host. And you will be a co-host. Okay.
Thank you.
Which document did you want to share?
The warrant articles.
Greg, can you do that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go through these one by one again, and just to finalize.
So Articles 1 and 2 are your standard. Except the, except the annual report. And then Article 2 is. Describing zero, zero dollars, zero monies for your time and energy, both the moderator and the select board members. Article 3 is the.
And you have your hand up?
Yeah, um. I think we should be looking at two separate warrants rather than one.
Why?
Because I think having an article that's intended for the ballot and not for the town meeting on the town meeting warrant will confuse people, it did confuse me. And I think people will expect that it is actually something that they're going to discuss. And having separate warrants for the ballot and the town meeting would prevent that confusion.
That's fine, if you want to proceed that way. That's the normal way we've done it, normally, we, we don't normally combine them because they're usually too far apart from each other. It just. Because they're closer together, you just allow some consolidation, but it, it's not a big deal to pull them back out. And have two separate warrants. It would give you a little more time to think about the. Dispatch article.
I agree with Dan on that one. As long as Alan thinks that that is. Copsatic.
I, I actually think it's preferable to do that, do it that way, with two separate warrants.
Okay, so does the document that you have up now, Greg, have both of them integrated into one document?
Right, so the, the, the greeting section, this top part would change, obviously, we would just delete.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I skipped over that.
So this right here, voters are. That would just go away.
All right, so, so just to clarify to those who. Are listening in on this meeting this morning, that top section. Is not part of the annual town meeting warrant. And will be discussed separately, we're gonna skip over that now, and we'll come back to it as a separate item. At the end of our discussion of the annual town meeting warrant. And they will be separated. Going forward. Okay, great, so I think we can go on to Article 3 at this point, is that okay, Anne?
Yeah, sure.
So Article 3 is the appropriation for the regional vocational school, Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School. And the, typically, the motion has the dollar amount.
Do we know yet what the dollar amount is, Greg?
You?
Can you scroll up to that, please, to Article 3?
On my screen? So the, the dollar amount is 3 million. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, wait, wait off. It's 223,380.
That, that's a relief. That 3 million number was a bit daunting.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm sorry. So 223,380.
223,380.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, the, the, the last town warrant I have is from Friday, the 18th. Where, where do I find this version?
I sent it to you on. Right, this past Friday.
Yeah, Greg, I, I don't have it either.
I.
Before this, but not, not this one.
Right, I have an email, but no attachment to it. From Friday. You see, went into detail with Article 16, but I don't have this one.
Coming across the wires in a minute. So. So Article 3 is, as we've just discussed, and then Article 4 is, is the, is the town budget. Operating budget. We don't think, you know, that's, that's included in the Finance Committee report, it's not included in the warrant itself. And you can formally adopt those numbers at your meeting on, on Monday, the 4th. So I'm assuming that the, the numbers that have been. Discussed are, are still valid and good, from your perspective, you just need your formal, formal vote on those.
Returning to the. Returning to the Article 3. Um, if we know the, the amount now, why not print it now?
You can, the, the convention has, has been presented at, at the town meeting, but you certainly can put it in.
Sorry, the convention was because we typically didn't have the number until after the warrant was published.
That's fine, we can, we can add it right in. So instead of a sum of money, it would just say available funds, and put in the amount of that, that 223,380.
Thank you.
So then Article 4, as I say, is the town operating budget for next year, and that will be contained in the. The Finance Committee report. Breaking out sellers and expenses per department. Article 5 is the capital budget.
Greg, stop for, stop for one minute. For people in the public who are watching this. The draft has not moved on my screen in terms of your share. I'm still looking only as far as Article 2. I can see it on, I can see it on my phone, because I have the email, but I think that, that we also need to, since this is a public meeting, need to. Stress out the town administrator even more by offering him another task. If you can just scroll, scroll that up a little bit, so that it's.
My screen sharing is paused, how do I unpause it? I don't think I've seen that before. Resume sharing.
There we go.
All right. I didn't know it went on pause, okay.
Yeah, it went on pause because under security, share screen wasn't checked. It's the gremlins in Zoom this morning.
Yes, indeed, all right. You'd think we'd figure this out by now, but.
Greg, you've had, what, about three hours hiatus from Zoom between last night and today?
Right. All right, right. Okay, so people can see Article 3, Article 4 here?
Yes.
Article 5. Is the annual capital budget for the town, and then we do list all those items. Started with road resurfacing, 209,000. Page. So again, these are the capital items that you've approved. And for that total of 3.356. Were 25.
If I can jump in for a moment there. From the previous budget to the warrant I had from the 18th. That dollar went out, up, not a lot, but about what, but 40,000, do you know, where did that go in?
Right, the 40,000, you added the electrical and water connections to Reed Park.
Ah, yes, okay, thank you.
Line 24, Becky.
Perfect, thank you.
It was coming from the waterway fund, so it did not impact taxation.
Right.
And then Article 6 is the school budget, both operating and, and capital. Capital primarily being the debt. So Article 7, if I can keep moving on, Article 7 is the community preservation. Project list, again, you approved. The list that's, that's shown here, that 1.189. Obviously, the biggest project here, that's out of the ordinary, is the. The new field on Pine Street at the old burned dump. So the various projects are listed, and there are various types of projects that they qualify as open space, housing, or historic preservation, those three buckets. All right, if you can move me on, Article 9 is the OPEB. Funding, continuing to put money away into the OPEB trust. Working towards full, full funding. Of our OPEB obligation, which is the primarily the, the health insurance for retirees.
Right, Greg, excuse me, we don't seem to have an Article 8.
You're right, Alan. All right, so that needs to be renumbered.
That, that's the article that we. Okay. We just need to renumber.
Yep, yep, we'll just renumber, so nine becomes eight. 10 will be nine, Article 10, Article, the new number nine, currently 10, is the revolving fund, this is an annual. Vote to. Permit Parks and Rec to operate a revolving fund for their various programs. So Article 11, which will become 10, some minor editing still here, based on last night's Planning Board meeting. So this is for a proposed amendment to the LCD, the Limited Commercial District. And the, the fine tuning is that the. Ability to have. Research laboratories as a, as a permitted use, limited to the current area, which is the far western end of the LCD, and then adding. As an amendment, adding the far eastern, and so east of School Street. So the, the. The LCD area from Pine Street to School Street would not. Be permitted to have a research lab. And the Planning Board. And the planning board rationale there is that based on the various environmental constraints and topography of that area in particular, to exclude it because of the, because of the features, environmental features and topography of the lands between Pine and School. And then further refining the, the new height regulation. So this section A would apply to all parts of town except for the most eastern end of the LCD, that is, that area from School Street East to the town line. That would be the area that Part B applies to, so that extra height, up to 55 feet, again, by special permit only, would apply to just that east of School Street section of the LCD.
Have those, excuse me, Greg, have those numbers changed?
The, the numbers haven't changed, just the area that they would apply to have changed. So in A, which is what it currently is for every part of town, is that maximum of 35 feet. And then the amendment would allow up to 55 feet in just that one portion of the LCD east of School Street. Again, it's, it's being associated with the research lab use.
Okay, thank you.
Additional changes are that there's some additional flexibility under special permit. That would allow more coverage, up to 40% coverage for the structures and up to 60% impervious surface for, for the partial of land. And again, that's only after going through the special permitting process. So it's a case, it's a case by case basis. So this section will be slightly modified to incorporate those additional changes that were approved last night by the planning board.
So the primary changes are the changes of including both the western, west of Pine with the east of School.
Yes, except the west of Pine does not have the option of the higher height.
And eliminating the parts between Pine and School, that else is part of the LCD.
Yeah, I, I don't know, in the original article, in the original bylaw, whether there was any construction allowed for these facilities in that area anyway, was there?
No, there were not. So there was, in the, in the the hearing notice was just for the two extremes, the western end and the, and the eastern end, not the middle, but there was a discussion amongst the planning board in the preliminary vote that had it included that middle section, but they they decided not to include that middle section.
So the language from last night, the, the last planning board meeting has not been included, and the changes have not been included in what we're reading right now?
Correct. This hasn't been updated from last night.
Okay.
But like I said, this, the change will be here in A, where this will, the this height limitation will apply for all areas of town, except for in Section B, we will put in here just that east of School Street section of the LCD would have the additional the ability to go up higher, to go up to the 55 feet instead of the 35. So that's the only area of town that would have that option.
Did they decide why they were not going to include that constraint or that capability on west of Pine Street?
But there was discussion about that, yes. In the end, they felt that the focus has been on, on the eastern end. And that, to some people's mind, that it, there wasn't enough discussion or, or notice that it really was to be the western end as well.
All right.
So not that it might not happen in the future amendment, but they felt that, given some of that discussion, it was cleaner to keep it to the eastern end.
Fair enough.
Any other questions on the LCD amendment?
Just to be perfectly clear, we are going to approve this with the understanding that Article the LCD article will change between our approval and the printing of the warrant.
Right, it'll reflect the changes that this, that the board of, that the planning board approved last night.
Thank you.
So then Article 12, which will become Article 11. This is seeking authority to implement the local room tax for short-term rentals. The language also include bed and breakfast and hotels lodgings. So it's a 3% room tax, and that the first, that would become effective the first day of October. Then Article 13, which becomes Article 12, this is the one where we would formally change the name of selectmen to select board, or board of, board of selectmen to select, select board. And then now would be the last article, Article 14, which will become Article 13, is just in case.
Not 15, it'll become 13, right?
Yes, did I say 15?
Long, long, I get it.
All right, so Article 14, which will become Article 13. This is the catch-all, if, if any budgets increase and we need to take additional funds from the fund balance, then this article allows us to do that. So in essence, we have the, the standard standard articles, primarily budget-related, and then we have these three special articles, if you will, the LCD, the room tax, and changing the name of selectmen to select board.
And separating out the greeting, removing that to warrants.
Right, so the, this will become just for the annual town meeting, and you will approve especially, you will approve a separate warrant for the annual election, which will also include the ballot question on the dispatch. And you can, you can finalize that at your second meeting in, in April.
19th. Is that? How many days in advance of the election do we have to have that in?
Technically, only, only the warrant has to be approved seven days, but she's gonna need to get it printed. So let me double check with her on the printing deadline.
So that may be included in our agenda for Monday, the fourth.
It might, but I, I think, I think the 18th will be okay, but I'll confirm that today.
Okay, great. Thank you, Greg. Are there any further questions on the annual town meeting warrant?
If I may, it's not directly on the annual town meeting warrant. I would like to see the question, the ballot question brought up at April 4th, because I think there are some parts of it that are going to require some discussion and perhaps reflection. There are parts of that that are assumptions based on earlier conversations, and I think having it on the second meeting will make us very, even, even if there's time to print it, that will make a very rushed discussion. So I would like to include that on the warrant, for, on the warrant, on the agenda for the, on the Monday, fourth agenda, yeah.
Okay.
So just clarification, Greg. So these last two articles that are in the document that you've got up here, they're moving to a separate warrant, correct?
Correct, yes. So, yes, so this, the this Article 14, or Article 15, which would have been 14, this, this one just listing the candidates, the vacancies, and then positions being voted on for officers, that'll be a separate warrant, as will this second ballot question, which focuses on the dispatch.
Right, so, okay, go ahead.
These two will be on a separate, separate one.
Which we, which we must approve today.
No. You have time, you can approve it at the, at the earliest, you would approve it at your next meeting, I'm pretty sure you'll have, you can approve it on the 18th.
All right, so it's just the, the other, the current article, the, the current warrant article that goes to, the current warrant that goes to what, 14 articles?
Annual town meeting warrant.
Right, that goes, that has 13 articles, that's all we're worried about today.
That, that's correct.
Yep.
Well, it's not all, but.
No.
Alan's hand is up.
Alan?
Thank you, Jeff. Excuse me, thank you, Jeff. Thinking ahead about the, the agenda for the April 4th meeting, it would also be helpful to me if you could decide who is going to move and second the articles that the selectmen are presenting, and also who will speak or answer questions on them.
I think that that was part of our agenda for Monday, anyway.
Thank you.
But thank you, thank you for bringing that up. So just to clarify, the election warrant has a different timing on it because the election warrant is tied to May 17th. However, does the election warrant need to be discussed at the annual town meeting? When, when does this warrant, is, is that warrant subject to a townwide vote, or just the Board of Selectmen?
Just the Board of Selectmen. There, there's nothing, there's nothing on the election warrant as a follow-up to the annual town meeting. Or say it the other way around, there's nothing at the annual town meeting that requires a ballot.
Okay, so we don't have to have this. This would not, this will not be something that's discussed at the annual town meeting itself. The election warrant, that'll be discussed in our open meetings. Okay, so at this point, if there are no further questions about the annual town meeting warrant, I would entertain a motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant.
I move to approve the annual town meeting warrant as presented, subject to the following changes. The Essex Tech amount will be listed at 223,380 dollars.
That's already in there. That number changed, Greg changed that number in this document that we're looking at.
I didn't see it.
The one that's on the screen.
Yeah, what I see on the screen is Articles 15 and 16.
That's fine. Right there.
There it is, okay. Fine. Um, and renumbering Articles nine through 14 to eight through 13. And changing Article 10 to reflect the pet planning board, the changes the planning board made in their zoning by law change. Second.
In discussion. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, we're not going to discuss tonight, or excuse me, this morning. The election warrant articles which are not yet approved and are not part of the annual town meeting warrant. The next item on our agenda is the discussion of MBTA zoning, and I think specifically the letter that the board is sending in and comments to the state on the regulations as proposed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we did get a, some suggestions from Laura Tenny. The, the planning board did discuss it last night. They would like to be co-signers, at least majority agreed to be co-signers to your letter. So the draft that that I prepared, and received comments from a couple of you. And then Laura Tenny has put together this version that's on the screen right now. And.
All right, Greg, it's not on the screen, we're still.
The warrant is what we have on our screen. I think you need to unshare your, your screen and then reshare it with, with the letter. Great. And can you on the, on the right-hand side of that formatting ribbon, in the bottom, in the top right corner, there's, there's a little arrow that goes up. If you could hit that, that'll give us a little. top right corner, there's, there's a little arrow that goes up. If you could hit that, that'll give us a little bit more real estate to look at. Right there, beautiful.
Okay, so some, some changes in wording in this paragraph about the syllable rise. I'll give you, I'll give you a minute to, to read it.
Yeah, I like that change, actually.
Me too.
Okay, do you want to move on? Any other comments on that change?
I like it.
John?
It's good, that paragraph, yep.
Okay.
Next set of changes were in the set of recommended.
Let me come back to that, just as a comment or a question. We're saying more flexibility is needed on defining districts that are suitable for development beyond the half-mile radius. What are we asking for in terms of the regulations? When you say more flexibility, that just gives them a lot of rope.
But so I think so her not, her new number two here.
Okay, it's good. Thank you.
Jump down to the, the specific recommendations, she's, she's expanded the list. So our first one says, don't use the seven fifty minimum, just use the percentages. She's added this new one that says expand the radius from half a mile to one and a half miles. Give us, give us more areas where we could add a by right, multi-housing, small district. The current regulations do allow sub-districts. So you could, you could have smaller pockets of where the by right use might be allowed. So she's added that new number two. And then jumping down, she was more specific about allowing existing multifamily housing units to be counted. And then she added the final one talking about grants.
Those changes seem fine to me.
Great.
Me too.
I'm good with the additions, Greg, but in the, in the comments that I had made, I think some of the terminology needs to be standardized a little bit.
Yes, yeah, so this doesn't incorporate some of those.
Right, so sometimes it says multi-unit units, sometimes it says new units, sometimes it just says units. You've got to, got to be.
Be consistent with that.
Right, so the people know, yeah, we know what you're talking about, right?
So those, all, all those references will become multifamily housing units?
That they could be, yes, whatever.
All right, any other thoughts?
So who would the signatories be then on this letter? Would it simply be the chairs of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board? Or would it be individuals?
Yeah, that's easiest just to have the two chairs sign, but we can it's your choice.
Listening to the planning board last night, um, I got the impression that they wanted to include the fact that the, their approval was not unanimous.
Right, under, under, underneath the the Ron signature, I would put by a, by a five to two vote.
And unanimous or whatever we under us. Sorry, Jeff.
Well, we haven't voted yet, Becky, so let's not jump to conclusions.
I said that, I did say.
I don't understand noting the actual vote. It's been moved and approved by the planning board. That seems to me kind of I don't know, I, I don't know what it seems like, but it seems unusual to include what the vote was. You know, we're going to put, as Becky said, whatever the vote is at the Board of Selectmen level as well. If a motion is passed, then it's approved by the planning board. That's the way that votes work. So I, I don't like the idea of putting that in.
I think, Jeff, that maybe if, if, if it were signed individually, maybe that would be a notation, because some people would not, on the planning board, do not want to sign. But if it's just the chairs, I agree with you.
Likewise. That's kind of why I asked the question.
Right.
I'm in agreement. All I can say is they were quite specific, but if you don't, you know, there's no reason why we need to follow their advice. Well. Specific, but, but I, 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 I agree, it was a majority vote that voted to do it and.
Was there a majority vote to include the actual number of voters?
The vote did include that.
That'll put Ron into a difficult position. So his board voted, he can he could sign on their behalf.
So his, his board voted to constrain the Board of Selectmen on a letter that they originated and that they're signing on to, to have it include this vote count. I wasn't available for last night's meeting, so.
I understand.
Is that what I'm understanding?
That was their request.
This was after a very lengthy meeting, so I'm not, it's.
But I'm trying to understand, the actual motion included a constraint that if the planning board is to be included in endorsing this, we have to put their vote onto this letter. Do they condition their approval on including the actual vote? Because if that's the case, I would move that we just send this in from the Board of Selectmen. We invited them to participate in this letter if they wished. They voted in, in an, in an open public meeting to accept the draft of the letter. The Board of Selectmen is voting today to accept this letter as written. I feel strongly enough about this to say I would not include the planning board in the, in the letter if we are constrained in such a way. The planning board does not constrain the board on, of selectmen on their own letter when they're, when they're coming in as a co-sign. They need to stay in their own line. So other members of the board have any comments on that?
I tend to agree if, if, if they are want to constrain us to include the actual vote, then really I see the options as we put individuals on. Or we just put this letter in from the Board of Selectmen and the planning board can submit their own letter.
I don't.
I think I think they probably still have time to do that because they voted to write a letter if they want to put their own letter in and constrained and, and so constrained, then that's fine.
They don't. You like, because they would have to post a public meeting to approve a letter and unless they posted the public meeting for sometime before five o'clock on Thursday and then submitted it because it's due on Thursday by five o'clock.
Well, didn't they essentially vote to approve such a letter already? I mean, the difference between, or did they specifically vote to sign on with the Board of Selectmen?
I'm trying to remember how it all transpired last night because it was.
If it's to be this letter, then they're signing on with this Board of Selectmen. I'm sorry, Becky.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Greg, do you remember how that, or, or Ann or John, I'm trying to remember how that got to, to the, the final two members of the planning board who said they didn't want their names on it. Was, and that, that was in fact part of their motion? Can you confirm? If Gail is on, she might have a better recollection. Sharon was on last night.
Sharon was in the minute, let me, if I can just let me see if I can get her notes from last night, if you want to hold on for just thirty seconds.
Okay, well, Greg's looking for those notes. Chuck, you've had your hand up for some time now. And I would recognize you if you would state your full name and and street address in, in Manchester.
Thank you, Chuck, for along Nineteen Ocean Street. Actually, I see Greg has left his desk. I'm, I'm very curious about the addition of one point five miles by right. What percentage of the town is one point five miles from the train station?
I don't know that I could give you an exact percentage, but it's a substantial amount of the town.
Well, my point, Mr. Chairman, would simply be that by extending the proposed as currently drafted by the MBTA half mile to one and a half miles and giving by right to multifamilies, that is a radical surgery on the housing stock of this town.
No, I think it's, you know, the draft regulations include that a particular area, a certain amount of acreage needs to be covered with districts, sub-districts, potentially sub-districts. So it doesn't require the entire half mile, it just requires that a certain area can be covered.
It's fifty acres, I think it is.
Well, there are devils in the details there. At, at the end of the day, the I, I'd also like to make one other data point for your benefit. It's, it's difficult to extract information from the MBTA website, but for the most current year that I can get ridership in Manchester, pre-COVID two thousand eighteen, the average number of rides per day during the week was thirty-eight. It seems that designing a housing construct around thirty-eight people using the train is something that should be held open to real scrutiny.
It's an interesting point, Chuck. That this law would, if it, if we don't sign into it, would cause a ripple effect in terms of many, many, many aspects of grant funding for critical projects in the town. As a town, if we voted to not participate, we would lose funding for many grant opportunities amounting to millions of dollars in funding.
Well, I, that remains to be seen. With all due respect, at, at the end of the day, this is draft legislation and the MBTA has sought feedback. And as we've seen in the press, there are very few towns in our area that support the, the, the legislation as currently drafted, so.
Chuck, I want to, I want to just clarify one thing. These are draft regulations, the legislature has already passed the law.
Forty A exists, correct, but the, but the, but, but the, the regulations attendant to forty A, as I understand it, that's what's open to interpretation.
That's what's open until Thursday for public comment and then they will make final regulations.
Right, so I it's, it's, it's difficult and I, I want to try to be fair-minded about this, but at the end of the day, the towns don't actually really know what they're voting to sign on to because they don't know what that's going to ultimately look like. That's, that's a caution flag to me.
Jeff, can I jump in with a point of clarification for what Mr. Furlong gave numbers on?
Yes, Becky.
The number, the number Mr. Furlong gave is for one train, the actual daily number is one hundred and ninety, Chuck.
It is not, Becky, it is not, you read, if, if we don't have a hundred and ninety.
May I finish, please? Chuck, it, it is. So that's granted, it's five percent, but that's of towns, people who use it. That's not talking to the total financial benefit we get from the people who come to this town, totally, but those are our daily average is about one ninety. And this is, this is from the MBTA. So I just, the number you gave is a one-train number. I just think that we need to make sure that the numbers people are presenting are in fact accurate. So an assumption needs to be made based on an accurate number.
With all due respect, Becky, would I, the, we're, we're looking.
This is not a side conversation that you have with an individual board member. If you wish to address the board, you need to come through the Chair.
Understood. I believe Ms. Jakes and I, Mr. Chairman, are looking at the same data and I believe we have interpreted the, the heading text differently. I did go to the trouble of asking Representative Tar to confirm my data. So I'll stand ready to humbly apologize for my error if. to humbly apologize for my error if it proves to be so, but I stand by my number today.
Okay, there is an issue of how those heads accounted. There's a discrepancy in the way that it's seen by you and by Ms. Jake's interpretation from the data she's looking at. There's also an issue that trips in Manchester involve, as Becky raised, the number of commuters that come in from Boston and from points north to visit the town, go to the beach, participate in the economic life of the town. The train is the train and the train is there. The law is the law. And just to clarify that we're not signing into anything. The deadline for signing in is, I believe, Greg, sometime in May.
No, you you so you're you're supposed to just you've you've done the first step. You've held the form that that was step one and that had to be done by May. And then by December, you need to show up a plan of how you want to address, start addressing, debating the possibility of amending the the zoning. So that's a second deadline. And then the third final deadline is December of twenty four to have adopted some new zoning regulations.
Okay, thank you. So the opportunities, Chuck, for for further discuss for discussing this whole issue further stretch out for the rest of this year. We're not adopting anything. And the the fact that we write a letter to to the state with our comments on the draft regulations does not mean that our comments will be adopted. And thirdly, as Mr. Bowling pointed out, the area remains the same. It's still fifty acres. It's not expanding the area of the over that entire mile and a half radius. We have fifty acres that we would need to make up in sub-districts, which if this suggestion for changes in regulations were to be adopted would allow us to have more flexibility about where those areas of multifamily housing might be as sub-districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything in what I just said that's inaccurate from your understanding and reading of the law?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and.
Just a minute. I asked a question of the town administration. Hang on one second, Chuck. I'll come back to you.
But so, yes, that's that's correct, that by expanding the radius, you'd have a bigger area from which to choose the acreage. But but you don't you don't add more acres of multifamily housing.
Okay. Any other board comments on on the issues that Chuck has brought up?
I'd like to make a comment on the letter overall.
So I want to get back to Chuck on this, though. Eli, if you would. All right, Chuck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the end of the day, first of all, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to offer some questions and comments. And secondly, there's an awful lot of data that needs to be mined for us to come to any reasonable conclusion. So I I encourage the board to to do that process with rigor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and 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 we appreciate your comments and the and the concerns that you've raised. This is a letter that needs to go in this week as commentary on the regulations. It's not going to be the regulations necessarily. They may take this and say, fine, we're not interested in that. And if that's the case, then that is more information that we will have when we have the final regulations to make decisions over the rest of the year as to how we might respond to this law and its regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bowling, you had some comments on the letter itself.
Yeah, I was gonna say the reason I support this letter the way it's written is I think it stands it. It's a constructive criticism to the state about the regulations that they propose. And it stands a good chance of achieving some of the things that would make the the regulations really considerably more palatable to our municipality and I think other municipalities. And I know that there are there's been some call to put out a more aggressive letter which simply rejects the regulations. But I don't think that that's a very good approach because that's the 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 state is going to write regulations and they're going to want the feedback to the regulations they propose and simply saying no is is not going to generate a reasonable response from the state. They'll probably ignore us and and write their regulations as they see fit, not not having any useful constructive feedback from us. So I I support the approach that the planning board and the Board of Selectmen are are putting forth here.
Okay, Becky.
I agree with Eli and I I in in the law itself, they do. They state that that a one size does not fit all. And and I think that if we I I don't know if it makes sense to just preface in the letter with that excerpt right out of the bylaw and then go on to say how why we feel that way. But I think it's a really well-done letter, and I think Laura's additions are very helpful.
Jeff?
Yes, correct, Eli.
We segwayed into this discussion from a previous query around the signatories of this letter, whether or not it would be the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, and Greg went off to collect some information and then.
I want to come back. I was about to come back to that, but I wanted to complete the discussion with Chuck's comments, which were very interesting comments to us. Okay. Thank you. Greg, you able to find the information you were looking for?
So yeah, so Sharon confirmed with her notes that, yes, the vote was to be a co-signer to the Selectmen's letter. And that as part of their co-signing, they would indicate their their split vote five to two.
Okay, I I would entertain. I've stated my very strong opinions about this. I would certainly entertain any further comments from other members of the board related to whether we will accept the conditions of their co-signing to this letter or suggest that they can write their own letter. And I recognize Becky.
Thank you. If I may, I just would like to address Mr. Furlong just a moment.
Becky, I want to stay on one discussion at a time.
I just want to thank him for his comments because I think they do offer it's it's I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Okay, okay, thank you, Becky. Anne. I need you to unmute it.
I I'm trying. I'm I got it. Could we allow or suggest to the planning board that they send a copy of this letter with their signatures, however they want it, so that they don't we're not asking to have a copyright on this. They can just take it and send it themselves with whatever signatory they want.
That would be up to the board.
This board.
This board.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
That that still leads them to have to have a public meeting to make that decision. Because what they left last night with is this is how we'll sign the letter. And if this board, Board of Selectmen does not want to have details of what the vote was on the planning board as part of the chair's signature, and we're only asking for the chair's signature because if we go to signatures of all the board members, someone could question why aren't two board members signing this letter? It was a vote of the planning board to sign the letter. So if all all planning board members are if all members of both boards are signing the letter, then all members of the planning board would necessarily need to sign the letter rather than have the tail wag the dog. So I would recommend that we only go with chair signatures. And I would also recommend that we only go with chair signatures and no vote, since the planning board seems to have made a decision not to do that. Then the planning board could go ahead and write their own letter, or if it's okay with this board, take this letter and send it in. I think that does create some confusion on the part of the state regulators receiving these letters if they receive the exact same letter from two different boards in Manchester. So my suggestion would be that they would need to write their own original letter with whatever suggestions that they had. But that's up to the that's up to a vote of this board as to how we want to proceed. So I think that if we were to try and puzzle this out, we would need separate motions on whether the board was in agreement that the planning board could take this this letter as amended and send it in with their vote of five to two or whatever. Or not, whether they need to create their own document.
I think if they want to send it in with their own cover letter on it, that's fine.
So send this letter without their name on it with a cover letter that said the planning board of Manchester has reviewed this letter and is in support of it with a vote of five to two.
Yep.
It's an interesting it's an interesting way to do that. Anne?
I I move the Board of Selectmen encourage the planning board to submit our letter with our chairman's signature and a cover letter of endorsing the letter.
Second, is there a second?
Second, and I'll have an additional motion after this.
Related to this letter?
Yes, simply to simplify this, but I support that for the I support her motion.
Okay, well, let's do that as part of this discussion before we vote on this motion.
Well, the the second motion I'm going to make is that we in fact send the letter in.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. I'm sorry, that was my assumption anyway.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have to vote on that?
I'd like to amend the motion if it's acceptable to Anne. And that is that they can send in this letter unamended or or as written. I don't want them to tinker with this letter. So the two words would be as written. So insert it into your motion.
That's fine.
Thank you, Anne. Is that okay? Eli, you seconded it. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the letter with the amendments or corrections or updating that we've been presented with today.
Do we have that motion? I thought I made a different motion.
Anne made a different motion.
I I hadn't finished, but go ahead, Anne. I'm just trying to get clarity so that we can get the the motion straight. Go ahead.
Anne's motion was to recommend to the planning board submit this letter as written with a cover letter indicating their support of the of the 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 letter. I believe.
I thought she was also approving this letter as written.
No, I was not approving the letter.
She did not.
Then I think we need to split the motion.
That's what I was saying. That's what I said and wanted to make a second motion to do that.
Okay, I I think we need to approve the letter first. And then
Okay. Okay, then I would I would I would draw my motion, and I would like to change one word above the line that says we recommend allowed to limit the number of new units rather than the amount of new new units. Okay, in that case, I vote I move that we vote to approve the letter as amended for to send to yeah, to send to the state.
Okay, so moved by Anne to approve the letter as amended and seconded by Becky. Any further discussion of that? Roll call vote, Mr. Round.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, now. We need a motion as to the planning board and.
Again, I move that the Board of Selectmen encourage the planning board to submit our letter as written with a cover letter indicating their approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Question. Are will they be? Will we be asking to see that before they send it?
No, it's up to them to send whatever they want. They can send whatever letter they want. We can't control it.
Only that the only thing we're saying is you can't change this letter now.
I just want to I just want that to be certain. I just wanna, I just want that to be, um, certain.
Okay.
So your, your certainty is that that Jeff will sign the letter, so that's becomes the letter.
Well, we could come back to that question uh, as to whether we want everybody's signature on this or not. It's more convenient for me to sign it.
I agree, I agree.
Uh, than have, so, than have everybody sign it, but if you all wanna have your signature on it, that's fine with me too.
Yeah, that, that's fine. My point was it'll have a signature so that you can't.
But we're getting away from the motion that's before us. So let's, let's take Anne's motion. Which is a recommendation to the planning board. Any further discussion of that motion?
Yeah, just a question on the wording, uh, Jeff. And I, I, is the wording, we encourage the planning board or the planning board may? Or are we recommending? What are we saying here? Or what are you saying here?
Sorry. I'm eating a bagel. Yeah. What I believe I said was that we encourage.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Does that answer your question, John?
Yep.
Okay. Are we prepared to vote now? Now, any other discussion points on this? Let's go ahead, um, Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Now, the final issue here is signatories. We don't have to do a motion on this. We can just make a decision.
I think it can be a decision. I was fine with it being the chair and we already voted to approve the letter as written, which includes the chairman's signature. So unless there's anybody who wants to, um, uh, interject that we, uh, really should have uh, all the signatories in, I think we can just leave it as is.
Agreed.
An- any other comments on that? Okay, then we're done. There any other matters that have not been anticipated that we need to discuss? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, um, but in a scramble to get this meeting over with, uh, we have several people. I'm gonna say that Becky moved it and John seconded, uh, roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
And Jeff votes yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your attention on this fine Tuesday morning. Um, and the comments of the public for this meeting. We're done.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, we'll need folks to come by, um, you know, tomorrow or, or Thursday to sign the warrant.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, and Greg, I will be, um, probably getting back into town. After, maybe after five, I'm not sure. We're, we're trying to get out earlier, but it's hard. Um, so I may be coming in to do all my signatures on Thursday morning.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.